I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order for Monday, April 9th. If you please call the roll.
Board Member Kaiser.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Here.
Board Member Osik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McCoy?
There are no approvals or no additions or deletions to the agenda.
I have one person wanting to comment on item 4.3C, Charles Weathers. Yes, yeah, come on up. And you have three minutes. At two minutes, the orange light goes off, and then you have one minute.
Sure thing.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Charles Weathers. I live at 1865 Church Street Southeast, Salem, 9702. And I just wanted to voice my support for the staff's recommendation. Any questions?
And that, what's the topic on that one?
Just... It is moving some funds into the downtown urban renewal, I don't know the particular acronym, but loan program from the grant.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Great. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, Counselor McCoy?
I move approval of consent calendar.
Second by Nanki. Any discussion?
Want me to talk about it?
Yes, go ahead.
The consent calendar consists of, we have the minutes of the March 26th Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Under action items, we've got authorizing the executive director to execute a second amendment to the development agreement between the Urban Renewal Agency and Salem LTC Properties. This is on a project that had some start and stop dates, and we're amending those to enable them to get this finished. 4.3B increases funding for the fiscal year 2017-18 West Salem Urban Renewal Grant Program by adding another $500,000 to it. 4.3C authorized the transfer of Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Opportunity Funds to add 294,000 to the loan program. And finally, 4.3D authorizes the use of 150,000 of Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Funds to fund off-site police facility improvements within the Riverfront Downtown Renewal Area.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports. Ms. Rutherford, do you want to...
Yes, Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. Just one announcement, and that is to remind everybody that we will be holding another Downtown Streetscape Open House next week, April 18th, at 5:30 at the Senator Room at Courthouse Square.
Okay. Any questions at all on the information reports? Okay. Very good. Well, we don't have any special orders of business public hearings, so we are adjourned. Call this session of the Salem City Council for Monday, April 9th to order. If you please call the roll.
Counselor Kaiser.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Also.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Counselor McCoy? Any additions?
We have two additions to the agenda. We've got item 5A, which deals with the appointment for citizen representative on the Budget Committee for Ward 2. And 3.3H has to do with the claim settlement authorization.
Okay.
Thank you. I move approval, I move approval to the additions to the agenda, now that you know what they already are.
Second by Hoy. Okay, any questions? Comments? Debate? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, it's an opportunity for counselor and city manager comment. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge city park staff and also the Friends of Trees. We had a great event at Weathers Park this past Saturday, the 7th. We planted over 24 trees throughout the park and really did a nice upgrade to that neighborhood park. We had people who lived right around the park also join in, and it was just a great event out in East Salem. So I really appreciate the city park staff and the Friends of Trees for their great partnership.
Great, thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Two items, if you please. First one is bad news, good news category, and that is the bad news. We had another pedestrian accident here on Commercial Street Downtown. The good news is, though, it was not a fatality, and there's someone who is, it was a 70-year-old woman, I'm sorry, I don't have her name, but she, according to Chief Moore and Deputy Chief Miller, it's not life-threatening, but nevertheless, it happened and it could have been. So I'm just adding that to the list of, you know, pedestrian car, pedestrian driver, really, it's not the car that hit him, it's the driver that hit him, incidents we've had. And I think that also kind of ties in a little bit to the winter Maple Street Bike Plan we're going to talk about, about making things safer. The next thing is on, and the mayor may talk about this too, but on Thursday, the mayor and I went to the pioneer ceremony and participated, mostly the mayor, I just watched, with, in the Quinming Festival.
Qingming.
Qingming, I knew I wasn't going to get it right, which was, you know, there are a number of Chinese people who are buried in the park, and that was discovered, and we had a lovely ceremony, and it's an annual holiday, and that also includes sweeping off the shrine, and the mayor did that. And then we had a list of, the names were read of all the people who are in that cemetery, and then there was a Buddhist sort of prayer ceremony afterwards to that, and it was very lovely, and we had quite a large contingent of our Chinese-American citizens from Salem, and it was, it was very lovely, and I'm glad that we could both take part in it.
That's right. There's, I'll just add, if I may, Counselor, there's some discussion of doing this now as an annual festival down there, which would be really nice. It was quite a moving, quite a moving event. Any other comments? I have one. I wanted to apologize to Counselor Cook and the council for the way I cut off questioning regarding the Lone Oak reimbursement district. I was more abrupt than I meant to be. It was sort of a clinic on how not to do this job at times, so those of you who took notes, that's how that works. Or doesn't work, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. No proclamations tonight. I know, I just want to make sure everyone understood that. Now it's time for public comments.
Sangster.
I can't hear. Sangster?
No beeps. No beeps. No beeps.
Well, Hersh, you spelled it right, so I now see it. Three minutes, at two minutes, the yellow light goes on, three minutes, the red light goes on, and I become abrupt at that point.
I'll wait for the orange one. I'm Hersh Sangster. I am president of the Salem Bicycle Club, and I'm here tonight to lend support to the Maple Winter Bike Boulevard. The Salem Bicycle Club has been in support of this route from its very beginning, and we continue to support that. In fact, we believe it's such a beautiful, safe route that it is now going to be part of our return route on the Monster Cookie this year. So we are expecting for the Monster Cookie, which is April 29th, between 1,000 and 2,000 cyclists. We're looking at, right now, just pre-registration, approximately 1,200. So most of these cyclists are from outside the Salem-Kaiser urban area, Portland, Seattle, we even have some signed up from the Bay Area. So they're going to get to experience what we feel is such a beautiful route back to the Capitol Building. So the Bike Club and I personally support this project, and I think it will show how beautiful our area really is.
Great.
And it's a safe route, too.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hank, are there any questions? Counselor Lewis?
Well, thanks for coming down. I appreciate your testimony. I want to make sure that you've read the report and are satisfied with the outcome, are not suggesting anything else to do.
You know, once you start a project and actually get it implemented, there's always little things that you overlook, but on the whole, it looks good.
Thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you. Thanks for coming down, thanks for reaching out earlier over Facebook.
Yeah.
Your actual route, you just said that we would use this as a return route?
Yes.
What kind of is the route?
The route itself, it starts at the State Capitol Building and the Capitol Mall, and goes down Chamacata Front Street to Liberty, Liberty to Pine, and then Pine to Cherry, Cherry in through Kaiser, and then through Kaiser, coming out at, on Quinney Road, better known as the Hitching Post, and heading north to Shampui Park. And then the return route comes about the same way, but turns off of, well, heads down towards Mission Bottom, and then through Kaiser, but this, instead of going all the way through Kaiser, we just go through Shoreline to Mambrun and cut over to Cherry, and then Cherry behind Auto Group Way, and ride on to Maple, and then over to Winter and down to our Capitol Building.
Excellent. Just to, so do we encourage those riders when they're in to, you know, cruise across either of the bridges?
I have worked directly with Travel Salem and am on their sports board, and Travel Salem will actually have a booth at the Monster Cookie down at the Capitol Building. And they're working with restaurants and stuff, because not a lot of restaurants are open Sunday afternoon in downtown Salem, but they're working with them to find out which ones will be, because cyclists have a tendency to like to have beer and pizza afterwards.
There you go. Well, they burn a lot of calories.
And like I've mentioned, a lot of these people are not from this area, and they just travel. And this is the 42nd year of the Monster Cookie, and it was voted the third-best bicycle-supported ride in the state of Oregon.
Great.
Wonderful.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, I'm a proud member of the Salem Bicycle Club, a former board member, and I'll be running the registration for the Monster Cookie ride again this year, so...
Also, for the record, I will be riding in the ride.
That's right.
And I have some flyers and some applications for the Monster Cookie up on the cement podium there, and the, I'll tell you, the Monster Cookie, all the cookies are baked locally. We have every one, everything we get is local, fruit, the vegetables, all local. And the Monster Cookie, it is good. Mine only has orange M&amp;Ms in it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Anderson?
My name is Steve Anderson, and councilman, and councilwoman, women, 3240 Geller Road, Northwest Salem, Oregon, and West Salem. I'm here to speak about item 7.1A, staff recommendation to hold a public hearing on the West Salem Rezone, and say that I'm in support of it. Been a primary stakeholder in that whole process, but I'm here tonight just as an individual. I've talked with Dwayne Hilty, which is a leader in the Edgewater area, but he's out tonight with his son doing basketball practice. But simply said, we've had a good relationship with staff on this, they've worked hard, we had some good relationships in developing the craft industrial area along in West Salem, down there, to help improve the community area. And right now, I met with Norm Wright after the public hearing, and we talked about some ideas. There's an issue, you know, there's a 100-page document here with development standards. And then along Second Street, it's mixed-use, there's no misunderstanding with that, but there's a question about how to make those development standards fit lots on the north side that are 125 feet deep, 40 feet wide, and the community has had a plan over the last 20 years, and in the last West Salem Business Plan, how to take the north side to leave it more commercial and move it into a more mixed-use commercial residential buffer as you move towards Third Street in the residential area. We would like to have the time to meet with staff, Norm and I talked about this, so that we can kind of come together and say, we've kind of resolved a couple of issues and tweak it a little bit, and we think it's just a good idea to have a public, what is it called? Public hearing before City Council, it's very extensive, and allow that to happen. So I'm just saying, yes, we support that, I support it, and would recommend that staff recommendation be adopted by City Council to have a public hearing. And just as a public service announcement, the Edgewater Partners are doing a town hall this Wednesday evening, the 11th, at 7:00 PM at Kingwood Bible. As a note in the community, there was a need for a landlord-tenant discussion, so there's going to be a discussion on landlord-tenant issues. I'll leave two copies here with Councilman Kaiser, it's her district, and you can have one, Mayor, but you're all welcome to come out Wednesday night at 7:00 PM and participate. We're going to have cookies, there's going to be a Spanish translator, so come into the community and participate in our second town hall. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Robert Courtwright?
Members of the council, my name is Robert Courtwright. I live in West Salem, and I'm here to talk to you about the Maple Winter Plan this evening. And the main point I want to make to you is that we have a plan that is excellent, but it needs a small but very important, a couple of small but very important changes. And it has to do with what the function of this plan is. What we're doing, in essence, is creating a new street classification here in Salem, one where we're saying the principal purpose, or a main purpose of the street, is to make it really safe for people to walk and to bike. And one of the ways that we do that, or one of the ways that the plan recommends that that be done, is to deal with stop control at the cross streets that we're dealing with. And in particular, to establish either two-way stops on those cross streets that cross Maple and Winter, or to install four-way stops. And the plan recommends that that be done. Unfortunately, there's effectively a big asterisk in the plan in the way that it's written. And it's an asterisk that basically sets up some fine print that the city staff are saying, we really need to do more additional engineering review to see if this is consistent with city standards and with national practices. And I would suggest to you that we have adequate information now, in the record, to do away with that asterisk, to, as a matter of city policy, say, we should be putting stop control at these intersections so that they are a safe place for people to walk and bike. Because again, I think we all know, intersections are the danger spot along these routes. We really need to make them safe for people to get across the street. So let me go on about that for just a moment. So again, what we're doing here is setting up a new kind of city street, one where we intend to have pedestrians and cyclists have their right of way. So in essence, we're setting new standards. So I don't know what the new, what the standards are the city would be asking us to look at. And second, in terms of national practices, that's one of the things that was looked at very carefully as this plan was put together. And we have the city of Portland, which is not only a national example of how to do this kind of street, a neighborhood parkway, it's an international example. We have people from all over the world that are coming to look at how Portland does this. And Portland, as a matter of policy, says, we're going to use stop control to make that route safe, basically to stop the intersecting streets and make sure that there's a priority for that. So what Salem ought to be doing, and has adequate information to do, is to put stop control in as a matter of policy. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? Right, thank you very much. Sarah Rice?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Rice. I live at 1635 Saginaw Street South, just down the road. I just wanted to bring up, to jump on what Bob was mentioning in his testimony, address what I think is an important safety issue with the stop signs along the Maple Winter routes. I had emailed each counselor, as well as Mayor Bennett, in the preceding weeks regarding issues with unmarked intersections along the route, and I'm sure you'll all agree that one of the main goals of this particular project is to create a safe route, as the safest route possible for those cyclists and pedestrians who are going to be using it. And I feel that in order to meet this criteria, you need to include the addition of these stop signs in the current plan. Stop sign inclusion now is an important sign of the city's commitment to a prioritized route that serves people of all ages and abilities. And I had received an email back from Mayor Bennett regarding this point, in support of this issue as well. So I'm asking to please include the addition of the two-way stops of the uncontrolled intersections, and that's at Academy and Hickory Street along Maple, and to also include the addition of stop signs at T-intersections, which are found at Spruce, Johnson, and Tryon along Maple. I believe that these are low-cost additions that would make the route so much safer. I'm the parent of an elementary-aged boy who spends way too much time inside playing video games. I love to encourage him to go outside as much as possible, and that's one of the greatest things about the creation of this greenway, in my opinion, is that he can have a safe route to ride and practice real street riding, as opposed to a bike path or a sidewalk, where in theory, he'll be able to ride without a serious threat. And right now, the way the plan is written, I feel like I wouldn't feel comfortable sending him off on his own to just navigate, you know, where should I stop, where should I yield, what does a T-intersection mean? The plan should really cater to those most vulnerable in our community, to those 60% of people who call themselves concerned but interested in riding their bike. I looked it up, there was three years ago that SBBA, the Bike Boulevard Group, first stood before you to request the beginning of this plan. We've had so many great city employees working on it, active citizens, and I wanted to thank you all for your involvement in this project and pushing it forward so far. And I just, once again, wanted to urge you to please take tonight's testimonies into consideration and include the addition of these low-cost but high-impact safety designs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Gary Oberry?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Gary Oberry. I live at 2045 Laurel Avenue, just north. I'd like to start here by saying how glad I am to see this plan being brought to council. The plan, when implemented, will be instrumental in creating stronger connections within and between these neighborhoods. It'll also help folks in these neighborhoods feel connected to downtown. So comprised of mostly low-cost improvements, the plan outlines some very achievable ways to improve neighborhood livability, health, safety, all those things we're looking for. So I think it's a big step in the right direction. So just to touch on a few of my written comments that I did submit, I want to address what we're calling the scope of this document. So while it's considered a planning document, that does not mean it can't contain engineering analysis and recommendations. What it cannot, what it cannot contain as a transportation growth management-funded project are engineering design plans or construction plans. You know, there shouldn't be survey data, engineered alignments, drainage calculations, and none of that is in the plan, and that's fine. But the plan should, and actually does, contain engineering analysis and recommendations on the big picture elements, such as, you know, the choice of the type of bicycle facility, the type of traffic calming devices, the type of intersection control you have at each intersection along the way. So I bring up the scope of this plan because I've heard city staff say that recommendations on the placement of some two-way stops or four-way stops, you know, are out of scope. So in my view, there are, they are no more out of scope than other elements, such as the mini roundabout, the marked crosswalks at Fergrounds Road and Pine Street, the turning of the stop signs at several intersections, which are included in the plan. So it seems like appropriate to have those things included in the plan. As a registered professional engineer with over 20 years' experience in traffic engineering field, I see enough information in the plan to justify two-way stops at Academy, Spruce, Hickory, Johnson, Tryon, and the four-way stops at Winter &amp; D and Maple and Highland. So it's the plan with its goals to create a route that is safe and comfortable for more vulnerable users, such as bicycles and pedestrians, more than satisfies the documentation requirements for an engineering study for these stop signs. So it's my hope here tonight that council recognizes the need to have the missing two-way and four-way stops added to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you for coming down, Gary. Both you and Mr. Courtwright have given us some written items, and I think your request is the same on both of them. His were three, okay, so I see you're nodding. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, Bob and I have been talking.
No doubt.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Gary. Becky Gilliam?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Becky Gilliam. I'm with the Saferds to School National Partnership. I live in Silverton. I just want to thank you all for the continued opportunity to submit comments on this plan. It's very exciting, and we are very supportive of it. I also want to thank council, city staff, and the Planning Commission, as well as all of the advocates that have worked so hard on this. So thank you, first of all. As heard at the public comment period for the Planning Commission, there's a strong community desire for the inclusion of both speed humps and a reduced speed limit throughout the neighborhood portion of the route. At the Planning Commission meeting, my organization had requested that, in addition to the existing speed humps that are kind of outlined in the plan that's before you this evening, to please add two additional speed humps right near the Oregon School for the Deaf campus. And we have folks from there that are here this evening, I believe, that will be speaking about that a little more. In addition to those new speed humps, the existing speed humps, we'd also ask for a reduction in speed limit to 20. As I see it and understand it in the plan before you this evening, it seems like maybe a little bit of an either-or scenario, where if we were to reduce the speed limit to 20, we would delay the installation of speed humps until further studies are completed. Of course, we would like to see both a reduction in speed limit and speed humps, but I really want to just kind of reiterate our strong support for immediate installation of the speed humps existing in the plan on that map, and also those two near the Oregon School for the Deaf really encourage you all to adopt this plan this evening, and please consider that request, that final request tonight, and I'm available if you have any questions. So thank you.
I do have one.[1717.13] I do have one. On the 20 mile-per-hour speed limit, are you suggesting, then, from the Parkway all the way to the Capitol, 20 miles an hour along the bike route? Is that what you're suggesting?
It had been our request, and it's my understanding that this is reflected in the plan.
Uh-huh.
That, not in that entire route, but the neighborhood portion. And I'm sorry, I don't have the map right in front of me, but it kind of terminates at Academy Street, I believe.
So it wouldn't be on Cherry Avenue by the School for the Deaf? It would be somewhere else?
I'm not sure if that is what is being suggested in the plan.
Okay.
If it were up to me, the whole plan would be 20 miles per hour.
Just bumps everywhere. Okay. Or 20 miles an hour everywhere. Just two more bumps. Okay. Yeah, I just wondered, why not by the School for the Deaf on Cherry Avenue? But I just kind of curious.
I think it had been my previous understanding, and I apologize for any confusion over the terminology, neighborhood greenway, neighborhood section, middle section. Of course, we believe that the school district, the school area, should be at 20, and we should have stop signs, and we should have speed humps.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Charlotte Jones.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Jones. I'm the Director at Oregon School for the Deaf. So there's just three things I want to mention. I mentioned before in my testimony that, when I came the first time. In the design, I noticed that there was some discrepancy about where the trees would be placed. We would like the sidewalk, then the trees, and then the roadway. I think that would be more physically and visually protecting of our students who walk on the sidewalk in the neighborhood. Also, the speed humps, we would like those included near the school. That's very appreciated. And lowering the speed limit to 20 miles per hour. I also wanted to mention, there was another deaf school recently awarded in Portland, Oregon, $16,000 from the City Council for their speed humps and their greenway. So I think you can do it, too. I wanted to bring a couple of our high school students who attend Oregon School for the Deaf to give you their testimony about what it means to them, being pedestrians around our campus. So I'm done.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Then, I have...
Zaida.
Sarah?
Zaida.
Zaida, I'm sorry.
Your turn.
And Alexa, Alexis is here in real light pencil. Was she erased, or is she coming up, too?
Hi, everyone. My name is Zaida. I grew up and I go to OSD for about five years now. I sign out and I go for walks. I notice that the cars drive very quickly around my campus, and I get a little nervous. It's not very safe for me sometimes. I have to take care of myself. A lot of my friends, you know, they are looking at their FaceTime or they're texting. A lot of us, we want to be safe, in more ways, when we walk. And we'd like them to be 20 miles per hour, to be safe around the people in the school. And, you know, I want them to respect us as pedestrians. I want to be safe. Thank you.
Great. Any questions? Councilor Anderson.
Thank you very much for coming down. The part of Maple Street we're looking at is on the west side of the campus. I wonder if you could tell us how you and the other students use that street, Maple Street, there on the west side of the campus? Where you go, how often it happens, that sort of thing.
Often. I get to sign out, go to get a taco, Fred Meyer's, 7-Eleven. We use Maple. It's not very safe for me, you know? I walk on the street, and I have to look very carefully to be safe. So it takes a lot of visual for me. There's no safe place.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Alexis.
Maybe a little slower. Okay. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Alexis. This is my school, Oregon School for the Deaf. And I've been there for three years now, and I've noticed, when I sign out from school, I walk to Fred Meyer's, too, or McDonald's, or, you know, 7-Eleven stuff, hang out with my friends. And a lot of times, you know, we walk on the side and chat. Sometimes the cars are pretty fast, about 30 miles per hour, I notice. But, you know, the rules, they should be lower. We should make it 20 miles per hour. I want that to be set up, and I want speed humps to slow them down and make them slow down. And the trees, they could protect us visually. And people, deaf people, you know, we can't hear the cars behind us. So, you know, I heard about, two years ago, a student riding his bike, and he got hit by a car. And, you know, it was, he was fine, but he got hit by a car. So, yeah. Any questions?
Any questions?
He'll ask any questions.
That's okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Leach.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Leach. I'm from 265 Richmond Avenue. I want to thank the council and the hard work by the city staff. They've already found funding for some of the more expensive parts of this project. And as you notice, there's been quite a bit of discussion about some of the more economic, cheap, well, yeah, we'll just say cheap improvements, signs, speed humps. And the southern two miles, or about 80% of the project, has quite a bit of funding for it, and some of these cheaper improvements that are needed. And so I would suggest that the city consider this portion a priority. The northern 20%, you're going to have to coordinate with ODOT and developers, and we all know how that takes time. But the other portion has a significant amount of funding and just cheap improvements. So to get this project out there as an example for the city and the other neighborhoods to understand, and which you really won't understand until you walk it and ride your bike, I would suggest that you make this two-mile section a priority. Now, we've got, coming down the line, additional funding from the state, from their House Bill 2017. And really, if we could get this project out there, or 80% of it, then that will be a good example for other neighborhoods to make their requests, and hopefully that funding can be used for their projects, rather than waiting, rather than this project, aside from that off. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Leach, any questions for Mr. Leach? Great. Thank you very much. Angela Oberry.
Hi, I'm Angela Oberry. I live in the Highland neighborhood. I'm with Salem Bike Boulevard Advocates, and I've been here before with you. In fact, I've been here from the very beginning of this project, and I've learned more about neighborhood greenways than I ever really wanted to know. I'm super excited that we're here tonight with a plan in front of us, ready for your approval. And I'm even more excited to see the start of the construction phase, so that we can turn plans into a reality. The plan tonight, with the additions that have been requested, transforms these two miles into something different, different treatments, different policies, and it's exactly what Salem needs if we want to welcome new people to walking and biking in neighborhoods. This is not about the brave and the strong, the folks who are already out there. It's about the folks that are waiting for something different so that they can join. And this is it with those additions. That said, I do want to say that planning's great, construction is better. I see the CIP tonight on the agenda, listed under the information reports, and sadly, I turned through all of its pages, and I didn't see any mention of the winter Maple Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. With such strong support for this plan, it would be a huge disappointment to see it placed on a shelf and just to gather dust. As it is, the timelines on page 35 of this plan, if those are followed, my children, my very two sweet, own children, will never use this route to ride their bikes to school. They'll be gone by the time it's completed, if those timelines are passed. And of course, I'm happy that other young children in my neighborhood will benefit, and I'm sure that I will be riding my bike or walking down to my park to play pickleball, and will enjoy the route. But as time goes on, you know, the talk becomes stale, the momentum is lost, and the route really doesn't serve as a model for other neighborhoods until it is completed, until it is a completed route. So I'm here tonight with three messages. First, a sincere thank you for letting me be part of the process. Number two, let's cross the finish line really strong with this plan by making these last additions of speed humps, not only those that are on the plan immediately, but the addition of those near our Oregon School for the Deaf. And then the stop signs, of course, and the trees as well. I'd like to notice that Charlotte said that. And then, third, I would say, is please intentionally find staff time and funds to make this plan a reality sooner than later. And that's all I have.
Any questions? I want to just, a brief comment. I've had an opportunity to work with you for several years on this project as a city councillor, and now as mayor, and I just want to tell you what a great job you've done and how excited I am to see this really begin moving forward. I've been working on this project, but also two-waying State Street for over 10 years, and I've gotten two blocks. So I just, I don't want you to think that's how bad it gets, but it does get bad at times in trying to move these things along. But we are talking about ultimately now two-waying State Street. I think finally, we're seriously talking about this bikeway, and I hope we can find a way to get this going this year, so your kids have an opportunity to ride on it as kids, rather than as parents and you as a grandparent, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Again, Angela, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up for, the agenda portion. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on items on the agenda? Okay, without objection, I'm going to go to public comment, not related to items on the agenda, and call up Linda Walmark.
Now, for something completely different. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and city councillors. My name is Linda Walmark, and I live in Ward 3. And I'm here tonight as a representative of 350 Salem, Oregon, the local grassroots climate change activist group. And I've come to ask you to endorse adding the reduction of greenhouse gas to the planning goals for the Regional Transportation Systems Plan for the Salem-Kaiser Transportation Study, or SCATS. Now, for the benefit of the members of the audience, SCATS is part of an intergovernmental group consisting of the cities of Salem, Kaiser, and Turner, and Marion and Pope Counties, the School District, Salem Area Mass Transit, and a representative from the Oregon Department of Transportation. SCATS focuses on regional transportation planning in the Salem-Kaiser metropolitan area, and it decides how federal funds for regional transportation will be spent. So this is a very important function for a variety of reasons. But I want to talk about SCATS's role in regards to climate change. Transportation is one of the largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions in most communities. In fact, according to the Oregon Global Warming Commission's 2017 report to the legislature, nearly 37% of the state's carbon emissions are attributable to this sector. So clearly, any effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions must focus significant attention on transportation. Now, in our strategic plan, Salem committed to a climate action plan with a desired outcome of reducing greenhouse gas emissions in our community. Now, Salem can pursue purely local transportation policies in our climate action plan, however, it is far more effective to approach metropolitan area transportation planning within a regional framework. After all, that's why SCATS exists. Greenhouse gas emissions reduction in the transportation section is also best addressed within a regional context. SCATS, of which the city of Salem is an important member, is currently adopting goals which will frame their planning for the next 20 years. They are circulating a survey online for public input on those proposed goals, and nowhere on their list of goals is there mention of reducing greenhouse gases. So are we to wait for 20 years before addressing climate change in this critical regional transportation sector? We don't have that kind of time. We need to act now to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so I ask the city council to vigorously support a change on goal number seven of the SCATS Regional Transportation System Plan, which currently seeks to minimize the impact of the natural and built, to the natural and built environment, by adding the words "and" to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The city of Salem has an important voice in this decision, so please, let's use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, thanks, Linda, for coming. You know, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned a regional approach is more important than a local approach. Would you say that a statewide approach is better than a regional approach, and a national approach is better than a statewide approach?
Well, there is a statewide goal for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the transportation sector, and in fact, they have identified, I believe it's five, of the major metropolitan areas in Oregon, and they have set some greenhouse gas goal reduction emission standards for those. But other than in Portland, all of those are voluntary. In Portland, they've had to take some mandatory kinds of measures. So I would like to see us get involved in trying to fulfill that state priority.
Anyone else? Questions? All righty. Thank you very much. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I was waiting to see if there would be any other people speaking, but I move that the staff prepare a report to the council and a letter to SCATS with respect to goal seven of its policy goals for council consider, no, I'll start again, because I got, I wrote this down. I'm much better speaking extemporaneously. Maybe not. That's something of your view.
You can't read, it's writing.
Yeah, that is true. Even with my glasses, I move that the staff prepare a report to the council and a letter to SCATS with respect to goal seven of its policy goals to be considered at its April 24, 2018 meeting, to support the inclusion of "and" to reduce greenhouse gas emissions after the current language of "minimize the impact to the natural and built environment."
Counselor, one thing, before we get a second on that one, did you want to put that on a date certain you'd like to have?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thank you, thank you very much. And we've had this discussion. I had some prior to the council discussions, and at one point, yes, I want to put that, I'll just, later, "report to" and "letter presented to" the council at its April 23 meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Second, McCoy. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah.
Discussion, oh, you're first. I'm sorry. Let him go first.
Sorry. I passed that on to the recorder, so she could have it. First, as a process matter, there was some concern that we might have to do this tonight, and we don't, because the SCATS meeting is now, is scheduled for after the council meeting. And I think that's a good thing, because it seems to me, we, I'm making this motion tonight, so the staff will have two weeks to prepare some report to us and come back so we can have further discussion. I really don't have much to add substantively to what Ms. Walmark said. I think both her presented oral testimony today and her letter lay out the facts, and I was very interested to hear her response to Counselor Lewis's question that, why, yes, local is one, regional is another, state is another, and right now, we've got the local goals, and we've got the state goals, and the region is in between, and I think we need to also push that forward. So all three would be operating in tandem. I don't know if three could operate in tandem. Three would operate together.
Kind of a tricycle.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, just a question to the motion maker. Are we talking about two different things, to have the staff come back to the council on the 23rd, and also send a letter to the SCATS board today or after that meeting?
After that meeting. No, yeah, yeah. I originally had just said a letter, and then I thought, well, I'd like to give staff an opportunity to review it a little more and give us some of their background, thinking and background on this. But my goal in this motion is that, at the end of our April 23 meeting, staff would be directed to send a letter supporting the language that I discussed about reduction in, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, add that to the SCATS goal number seven. And I'm also cognizant of, we are just one part of SCATS, but I think that's something that we can discuss at the next meeting and... at the next meeting and something also that we can get a staff report, just to fill us in a little bit more about what are the procedures for SCATS, how do they operate, this sort of thing.
Right. I'm gonna call on the city attorney for a moment.
Thank you. So procedurally, this is a little awkward, because typical council motions need to come in prior to the council meeting, so you have an opportunity to review it. Council rules normally would prohibit you taking action on this motion tonight, and so as councillor Anderson has indicated, you can take action on the motion on the meeting on the 23rd. I believe staff can still prepare the letter and fulfill the request to have that as part of the council motion, but you actually won't take action on this motion until your meeting on the 23rd.
That's consistent with my understanding. I'm just trying to get it out now so we can have a staff report in the works between now and then. We will not vote on adding the language until the April 23 meeting. Thank you for that help out here, Dan.
I, I view it as, I just, how, here's how I'm hearing it as the chair, is the councillor is asking for staff time to get this put together, and this is the standard way to do it.
Okay, which was in his motion?
Well, it's gonna, I'm, I'm gonna suggest it'll take an hour of staff time to write this letter. They've got to explain how the third bridge affects gas emissions and a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'm happy with that interpretation of my motion, that we're just asking staff to prepare something to come back to me, two weeks from now and have a full-blown council discussion.
Okay, very good. Okay?
So you can table the motion for tonight.
Do we table it tonight?
Right, you're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna vote for the motion. I don't mind talking about anything. As the, as the city council member on SCATS, the issue has come up numerous times at that board, and, and I stand by the language that they have put out to this point. But talking about it on the 23rd is, you know, I'm not gonna object to that.
Okay. Councillor Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, similar. It, it's kind of a weird process-wise. Normally, it'd come in as a councillor item the week before that, but I'm interested to see what staff has to say on it as well, because reduction could mean building three bridges just to let cars move faster.
That's right. Councillor Anderson's willing to take a chance on that, I can tell. Okay, and, and the city attorney agrees. This is a weird procedure. I, I could ask if you'd like to suspend the rules. My sense of council is we don't need to go through that. We will just vote on the councillor's motion. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. Just a minute there. Consent calendar, councillor?
Okay, I move approval to consent, the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2A by councillor Cook, 3.3C and 3.3E by councillor Anderson, and 3.3G by councillor McCoyd.
Do it, do it one more time, councillor.
3.2A by councillor Cook.
Okay.
3.3C by councillor Anderson, 3.3E by councillor Anderson, and 3.3G by myself, councillor McCoyd.
That's the one I missed. Thank you very much.
Second.
Okay, second on the consent. Did you, Nicky? Okay.
You want me to?
Yes, please.
What remain?
What remain, yeah, with the few that remain. We've got the minutes of the March 26, 2018 city council meeting under action items. We've got 3.3A, which accepts a petition to vacate Vacation Lane Southeast and directs the city manager to set a public hearing date to consider this petition initiated vacation. 3.3B, authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease with the Salem-Kaiser School District on property that they lease at 360 Commercial Street Northeast. 3.3D, authorizes the city manager to execute the attached purchase and sale agreement for a tax lot with Westwood Homes LLC. 3.3F is authorize the city manager to execute the attached purchase, a purchase and sale agreement with Donald Pierre for the acquisition of real property located at 2035 Oxford Street Southeast, which is a property that abuts the city shop area. And 3.3H is authorize the city manager to resolve a lawsuit brought by Richard Leonard in an amount not to exceed $65,000.
Very good. Any questions or discussions, anything? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, it's just, we have no public hearings, so special or business, five A. Councillor Anderson? This is the appointment of the budget committee member.
Oh, okay, good, because I was trying to see what's in there.
What it was, yeah.
Consent calendar I pulled.
You didn't pull that one, yeah.
I move that the council appoint Kendra Mingo to the Salem Budget Commission Committee representing Ward Two.
Second.
Second by Cook. Councillor, you want?
Thank you. You've seen her application. Ms. Mingo lives in the ward. She's academic administrator at Willamette University, so she has some familiarity with these items, and I think she would be an excellent representative of the ward and also excellent on the budget commission.
Great. Councillor Cook?
I would just like to second the process of Kendra coming on board through Budget Committee. I had the pleasure of serving with her on the Salem Public Library Advisory Board and found her comments to be insightful and her view of the process to be very meaningful.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by McCoyd. Discussion, did you want to?
Great. So I was actually on my way up to Woodburn this morning when I called Steve to say what poll it was. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to find out a little more from staff about this particular right-of-way acquisition in regards to traffic in the area and development.
Hi, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. So this is a dedication of what colloquially is called a spite strip. So back in the 60s and 70s, it wasn't unusual when subdivisions were platted that a one-foot reserve, reserve strip was, was left to basically address any kind of issues that might be remaining when the next subdivision would attach. So in this case, the next subdivision has attached, I believe it's to the south, so then this last piece just needs to be dedicated as right-of-way, because if not, it's not, it's not legalized as right-of-way. So that's all it is. It's a one-foot wide stretch that, it's just a formality to make it right-of-way.
Just to bring it on board, there's nothing unique or particular about it?
No, it's, it's not a practice that, that we do anymore, but it was very prevalent, like I said, in the 60s and 70s. So, so they're kind of still out there, and when we have subdivisions attached to them and the street connects, then the last piece is to then dedicate the, the last piece of the reservation.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, this is related tangentially, so, excuse me, it'll take just a second to get there. But we talked about the Winter Maple Bike Plan tonight, and I know in that particular area with Davis, Skyline, and Liberty, and the amount of developments that have been approved for that area, the issue of traffic, walkability, accessibility, and connectivity in the area keeps resurfacing. So I look forward to working with staff online on this to be able to make sure that as we're adding places for people to live, that they are places people can move about freely and, and not feel encumbered with traffic and hazards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Councillor Anderson, do you want to make the motion or do you want to let councillor Kaiser?
I'm happy to let councillor Kaiser, but I do have a point of order, because I think that there may be some potential amendments offered, and I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if the offer of the, the person who offers the original motion can then amend their own motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let councillor Kaiser do it.
Start the, start the ball rolling?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What are you talking about, Sarah?
Councillor Kaiser, what's your motion?
All right, let me see if I can get this out appropriately.
Which item are you on?
I move to adopt the Winter Maple Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan with the following alterations, and that is adding four-way stops at Deane Winter and at Highland and Maple, adding two-way stops at the uncontrolled intersections of Academy, Hickory, and Maple, adding stop signs at the T intersections of Spruce, Johnson, and Tryon Avenue at Maple, and renaming it the Winter Maple Neighborhood Greenway.
Okay.
Second by Hoy. Do you want to go, do you want to speak to your motion?
Sure, yeah, and thank you for the opportunity to make the motion. Part of this is in Matt's ward. The chunk of it is in Ward One, though. I've spoken at length with a lot of the people that spoke here tonight. I've also spoke with Anthony and Julie and staff from Public Works, and I think the plan is, is, it's, it's very good, it's solid. I do think that because we're already kind of identifying some things, that we can add just these little extra things. And really, we're talking about stop signs. It's not changing the route or anything like that. And then calling it the Winter Maple Neighborhood Greenway as well, which is consistent with kind of these other namings of things in the state of Oregon. And it'll brand it like that. So, yeah, appreciate your support of the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Cook?
Is this, this where we ask questions for the amended motion while it's on the table?
Certainly, anything you, it's the main motion.
Okay, the main motion.
Yeah.
The excellent motion that councillor Kaiser brought forward. So was that amendment to include the reduction of 20 miles an hour for the Neighborhood Greenway?
That, my motion did not include that.
Okay, and the speed humps in front of the school for the deaf?
It didn't include those, the, the additional speed humps in the school for the deaf. I would not be opposed to that, though.
Can we, well, because I'm really curious to see what staff says to kind of go a little further. But we, I know we have a motion on the table, so.
Go ahead and ask him.
You can ask them?
Yeah.
I would like to ask staff a few questions for, for Ward. So who would like to take some?
Councillors, I suggest, councillors, if I may, I suggest you direct your questions initially to Mr. Fernandez, and he'll, he'll route them to the appropriate staff. I think that'll be more efficient and clearer for everyone.
Thank you, Steve. All right. So Director Fernandez, it's my understanding that the speed, so isn't it already 20 miles an hour around school when kids are present? And is there any sort of particular exception with the Oregon School for the Deaf because of its state property?
Yes, I'll let Kevin Hartman, the city traffic engineer, answer the questions about the speed limits around, around the Oregon School for the Deaf in particular.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Kevin Hartman. I'm the city traffic engineer. And the school for the deaf doesn't have school zones set up. Generally, the school zones in Salem are elementary and middle school. So, but we did some, this summer, we did some studies out there, and we did post some 25 mile an hour signs on some of the, the areas. But the school for the deaf does have some walking, but during a lot of the periods of school time, that there's no pattern of coming and going like a lot of the other resident, or the other schools.
Okay, and with the greenway, I was looking through the city of Salem's pedestrian plan, our transportation systems plan, and we've included sections on bicycles and pedestrians and these sort of things. But do they provide enough guidance or specificity to meet the needs that are being presented in this greenway? Is that covered in the?
Well, the, for, for the Speed 20?
Right, or the humps?
Well, the Speed 20, yes, what's being proposed does meet the, the language of the legislation. So 25 miles an hour along the school for the deaf, the, on, on Maple would be inappropriate.
Would be inappropriate or appropriate?
Appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I think we've, we've talked about it, and we're, we're okay with, with expanding that. I think it's, it's, it is defined. The speed bumps, generally, when we had planned the speed bump, part of this project, the speed limit was 25, and the speed bumps are designed to reduce traffic volumes to 25. So a lot of locations where we've, we've had speed bumps before, people are doing 30, 35, and it gets them to get close to 25. When, when we were asked by the neighborhood about the use of 20, and it fit in, the question that came for us was if the speed limit is lower than what the speed bumps lower them to, let's try that. Let's see how effective that type of signing would be. I mean, we've got 25 and 30 mile an hour. This would give us an opportunity to see how effective the signing would be, but still have the speed bumps as an option, because that was part of the plan. And take a chance, because as we put the 20 mile an hour out there, there'll be more requests, and it would be easier for us to have discussions with other neighborhoods about what we're seeing with, with testing it. If we do the speed bumps and the signing, then we won't, we don't know what the, what the results of the individual are. So that, that's where we were approaching it.
Okay, councillor Anderson?
Thank you. Director Fernandez, continuing on the, the, the speed hump issue. I at least understand that there are, is the potential for some sort of kind of temporary speed humps that are rubberized and, you know, attached by some sort of bolt that could be easily taken off and wouldn't cost that much to install. Is, is that such a, is there such a thing like that, and could it potentially be done here?
Sure, the product, the product exists. It's, you know, they cost what they cost, and you have to purchase and, and install, so.
And I, I think.
It's just, it's the, right. Our taboo is always dollars.
Yeah, what you're essentially saying is it could be done, it's a policy decision by the council.
No, the, the, the product that we use is just, you know, we decide.
Okay.
The standard. So, so it's the, you know, it, it's, it's the installation of the speed hump itself, whether we use asphalt or concrete or rubber, you know, we'll just.
Sure, that's your decision, which is, it should be.
We'll just make that decision. I, I think the key item that, that Mr. Hartman speaks to is, is if we want to reduce the speed limit to 20, and the speed humps are designed to 25.
Yeah.
It's less expensive. It's certainly, it's something that can be done pretty immediately to simply post the, the segments to 20, see if they work. If we get good solutions, then, then money that we would have spent on speed humps, we could go spend someplace else or spend on, on other facets of, of, of the greenway.
I understand that. And before I make a comment on that, I see from the plan that the cost that the Public Works has estimated would be $3,000 to $5,000 per speed hump?
Right.
Okay, so within that, you make the choices to what you think is best. I understand that perfectly, and that's the way it should work. I guess I'm also kind of looking at a couple things. The first one is, yeah, we have 25 miles, mile an hour posted all over the place, including, for example, in my neighborhood, High Street, High Street by the park. It's pretty clear that 25 miles an hour is honored in the breach more often than it is in actually having it happen. So I think it's, it's a fairly common observation among all elements of city government that are dealing with speed limits, that they are exceeded a whole lot. So I look at the, the, the speed humps and the speed limit as kind of a belt and suspenders approach that we're doing, both of them. And, you know, this is not directed toward you, I'm just making comments now. So in that situation, I, it, to me, it's a given that if it's a 20 mile an hour speed limit, people are gonna go, be going faster than 20, including faster than 25. So if you had the speed humps that will, are designed to keep them at 25, you, it's a two-pronged approach.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I would, that is not part of this motion.
No, but I'm moving toward an amendment to the motion.
Talking yourself into it?
No, I was already there, and I thought maybe Counselor Cook might do it, and I'll wait till other comments until I make an amendment.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't really have a question, I just have more of a comment, but it's, to me, the speed limit signs only work when we have law enforcement available to enforce it, the speed humps are there 24/7 without requiring any staff.
Counselor Kizer.
I might preempt you, Tom. My quick question, though, is where are the speed humps now located in the plan? Do we know really quickly? They're kind of throughout, I know, the bikeway, but if there were an addition of two up at Johnson and Tryon, it's not like out of character for the plan to have those, is my presumption.
Our project manager, Anthony Gamallo, is looking them up, and will come up when he has them identified, which I think is right now.
Thank you. Anthony Gamallo, Public Works and project manager. All right, so right now, in the plan, we have them located at just south, this is starting on Cottage, just south of Jefferson, then just south of Madison, another one north of Madison, then we have two on South Street, where it kind of jiggles over to the west there, and then when it goes up on Maple, there are two located there. And, yeah, so obviously, we were hearing there's interest and request to take them all the way up to the school for the deaf, and that is something that, I guess, from an engineering standpoint, we'd look at if that's the direction that we received.
Yeah, so I guess I would like to amend my motion to include speed humps by the Oregon School for the Deaf as well.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Cook.
Clarifying question, not the 20 miles an hour speed hump stop signs, or speed hump stop signs 20 miles an hour?
Stop signs and speed humps.
Wait, wait.
That's.
Are you talking about, if your motion's amended, you would be adding, if your amendment passes, we'll be adding speed humps only to your original motion?
That's correct.
Okay, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, also on speed humps, because I had contact from an individual asking on the process in a different neighborhood, and it sounded like there's been some shifts over time, if we just moved forward, the school for the deaf could request them at any time, and would they have to pay for them? Because I heard we were actually installing some and not making the adjacent property owners pay for them. What is our current program for adding speed humps?
Sure, we've had a longstanding adopted neighborhood traffic management plan that has a process for engaging the neighbors, doing some data collection, engaging the neighbors, et cetera. In the past, we really have not had funding for those kinds of projects, so what has tended to happen is if the neighbors don't assess themselves, then there's really just no money to install them. As our financial situation has improved, then there is, in the CIP, there is money for some traffic safety installations that could include these kinds, these kinds of items, so, but the process is the same, any neighborhood can, any street can make that request, and then it's just a matter of going through the process to make sure that the majority of the neighbors want them, that there is actually speeding in the neighborhood, that the road is relatively flat, you know, et cetera, there's a series of criteria.
But then the city would potentially look at providing those?
Well, now we have, right, our financial situation is very different than it had been, I don't know when was the last time that we've had a request, but, you know, now we're in a different situation where we could theoretically take some money in the CIP and make the request, you know, put it in a future budget proposal.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. Director Fernandez, what's the information or data that Public Works is going to, is wanting to learn from lowering the speed limit versus having the speed humps? How would that change potential, how would that impact other requests in the city?
Well, but the 20 mile an hour speed limit is a new law, so we really don't know if posting 20 mile an hour, what is that going to do, so I think the kinds of things that we want to do is take some speed data before the speed sign installation, put the speed signs up, take the data afterwards, and see if they're effective. I agree with Counselor Anderson and with Counselor Hoy, people, you know, for the, some people tend to ignore the speed limit sign regardless of what it is, but we could take a look. What Mr. Hartman was saying, though, is the speed humps are designed for 25, so if we install the speed, if we install the speed limit signs and the speed humps together, then we never would know what the signs did for us, so I think what, you know, what we would do is, speed limit signs are relatively easy, relatively inexpensive to install, that could be done quickly, we could find out what effectiveness they have. If they have zero effectiveness, then it would inform the staff, inform the council, that even though there's a law for us, it's really not doing anything, so we really just need to continue with our neighborhood traffic management plan and do speed humps, so our recommendation is, you know, let's sign it, let's see where we're at in a, you know, just in terms of whether they work, and then invest the money in the speed hump, so that's, we're not opposed to the speed humps, obviously, they're in the plan, and the adopted plan is just a matter of what works, what may work and what may not work.
Okay, Counselor Cook, did you have anything else?
I think we're good, thank you, Director Fernandez.
Okay, I've got Counselor Anderson.
I just had a sidebar with Counselor Kizer to make sure that her motion is just to add the speed humps at the school for the blind, because the speed humps or bumps, or whatever you want to call them, are already in the plan. So with that, and I'm looking at the city attorney here, can I move to amend the amendment?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, wait, yes, you can.
Okay, yeah, yeah, he's got the answer here, yeah. And so here's my amendment, based on the testimony we had earlier today, I would amend Counselor Kizer's amendment to add the fact that the speed limit along the western boundary of the school for the deaf be posted at 20 miles per hour in addition to the speed humps, not the rest of the, because I can see the point that the staff is making, we need to look and see what it is, and I think you've got enough, oh, that's my motion, I'm sorry, somebody has to second it.
Second.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So, just so I understand what you're suggesting, then, is you would like to put up a 20 mile an hour speed limit and speed bumps at the same time?
Yes, just to the, just to the west of the school for the deaf.
On the Maple Street side of the?
Yes, and I'm fine with, I agree with staff that we need to study, does 20 miles an hour do it before we need the speed humps, but I see there's a bigger safety issue right now that's at the school for the deaf, especially, I've ridden my bike out there, and Maple Street by the west, they're all T intersections, so you look at it, and it looks like a freeway there, and at the other spots, well, relatively speaking of freeway, the other spots where the speed humps are, are in areas where there are streets coming across, there's, they're more of a residential area, which tends to slow down, so I think the staff idea that let's do one first and look at the other has a lot of, makes a lot of sense, but I'm looking just to see if we can help out the school for the deaf, I thought the kids' testimony was pretty compelling.
Good. Counselor McCoy.
So Peter, when we sign this, along this, is there going to be probably, for lack of a word, more, more speed limit signs on this throughway, you know, bicycle throughway than there would normally be? So, I mean, I think one of the things you get into, it's 25 everywhere, but there's not 25 mile an hour signs that frequently, and you get rolling along, and people all of a sudden are going 30 and whatever, I'm just wondering if you have more of them placed so it's a constant in there, folks, that slows them down.
Good evening. Normally, we post speed signs where there's a change, so off of a lot of the arterial streets that are like Pine Street or Cherry, we would have a sign to let people know they've made a change onto the new street. We could, we could look at adding a few more where there are changes, but normally, we try to place the speed signs where it would be unlikely the driver would know that the speed's different than what the street they've been on.
So I understand, whether it was 20 or 25, how are they supposed to know that if there's not enough frequentable signs there to know what the speed limit is? I know, you know, I'm talking about the length of the bikeway, not the cross streets.
Yeah, this situation, we'd probably have to have more, because people are coming off of a 25 mile an hour, wouldn't realize it. I don't know that we've planned that far out on how many we're going to actually put, but we would have to have them frequent enough that they would be enforceable, and that a driver that's, would be able to understand what they're, what's expected of them.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, before I comment, I just wanted to clarify, are we talking about Amendment 1, Amendment 2, or the original motion, or all of them?
We're talking about Counselor Anderson's amendment to do belt and suspenders, his speed bump and signing combo.
Yeah.
I don't have a comment on that, I have a comment back on the original.
Okay, everybody ready to vote on this one? Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, this is, this is hard, I'm sure I'm going to get brutalized on this one, but I can't support the motion, and it's not because I'm not favoring the bike plan, I do, we've been working on this for a long time, it's gone through a process, including coming to us from the Planning Commission, and it has a specific recommendation. My concern is, with our limited resources, we are getting out of balance, and I'll use, at least in the 18 years I've been here, when it comes to bicycle and pedestrian, we, I'll start with the bicycle and pedestrian plan that the city passed, which from this point forward, no street, no road will be built without a bicycle and pedestrian accompanying it. My concern about stop signs everywhere is that at some point, we interfere with the movement of others that are in their cars, and it starts to get to the point where it seems like punishment to me, and so I just think we, at least for me, this moves, with the amendments, moves out of balance, but again, I am in great favor of the bicycle plan as it's been recommended, and I offer a substitute motion to that effect.
Why don't we do this, let's clear the decks of this one, if you don't mind, and then we'll add, we're starting to pile up quite a few, if you don't mind, and, okay, so we're on Counselor Anderson's substitute amended amendment.
Which is the speed limits?
This is the signs and speed bumps, both at the deaf school, right?
It is, it is Counselor Kizer's motion with the addition of 20 mile an hour speed limit signs to the west of the school for the blind, that's it.
Deaf.
Deaf, excuse me, I'm sorry, school for the blind is in my ward.
No, I got you, okay, so all you're adding is the signing?
She added the speed humps in front of the school for the deaf.
You ready?
I actually want to comment on that, I'm talking about the original.
No, we're not quite there yet, are we, to the original?
Yes.
We'll get there, but no, let me get this one done, and then we'll go back to her original motion, guess Nanki.
And since it's just the 20, and we do have other places around town where it's 20 mile per hour when children are present?
Yeah.
Which is typically daytime hours as well, to put that at 20 through the evening as well, depending on who drives, it may be more that they don't see the shift, or they'll still be going 25, which technically is.
Too fast.
No, not, not at, you know?
Yeah.
1:00 in the morning, if I just work till midnight and I'm coming home from wherever, so, I would support a 20 mile an hour when children are present, but not a wholesale to 20.
Okay, Counselor Kizer.
I will add that the Highland Neighborhood Association has been on this for the school for the deaf in this area for, and Matt's nodding because he knows, because he's been on this, and Kevin Hartman's been helping with this, they would be grateful to have a reduced speed limit, even if it's on one street of the school, because of the way the school is classified and all of that, it's complicated.
Okay, is everyone ready to vote on Counselor Anderson's motion? Okay, Counselor Lewis.
Well, procedurally, I think I'm correct, if there's a substitute motion, that has to be voted on.
So this is more of a Robert's Rules rule, but you only get three motions on the floor at a time, and we've got the main motion and two amendments, so your substitute motion would be improper.
Let me, let me just get back to the, well, what we'll do is compile the original motion as amended, and then you can make your motion, okay? See if you've got an alternative that flies. Okay, all those in favor of Counselor Anderson's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Lewis and Nanki are nays. Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we're to the original motion from the counselor as amended. Do you want to say anything more about it? Great, good motion should pass?
Yeah, good motion should pass, should have included the speed humps in my original motion, but didn't, but I think the addition of the speed humps is a reasonable thing, because they're already included in the plan, south of Pine Street, and this is adding essentially two more north of Pine, so.
I'm sorry, this is why you don't let too many of these get started. We're going to vote now on the amendment, which is?
Speed humps.
The speed humps.
Two speed humps.
My amendment was for the speed humps, north of Pine Street by the deaf school.
Now we have speed humps and 20 miles an hour. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, Nanki and Lewis vote no, motion passes. Okay, now we're back to your motion, go ahead. Do you have anything more to say?
It's all good. Thank you to staff as well, actually, when I was talking with Anthony, we had a lengthy conversation one day, and he told me that when he was working in New Jersey, New Jersey, that this would have been unheard of over there, to have a plan like this, and that it was so nice to be able to come to Salem and work on something like this that could increase multimodal access in our town, so I think this is a really great thing for our community.
Okay, Counselor Ann, Lewis and Hoy, you up first? Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a person who has cycled that route literally dozens, if not hundreds, of times, and I'm one of the confident, I can't remember the term word that they use, brave, Angela's saying brave cyclist, not one of those more timid folks, it is not an easy place to cycle right now with the, without, with those T intersections and with some of those where there are no stop signs, it's a challenge, especially at D Street, you have to really work at crossing that safely, and you can, it's not easy, especially also with the current condition of the pavement on Winter Street, so.
Okay.
I fully support the motion.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to speak to the comments, just the concerns that maybe this is unbalanced, or I think Counselor Lewis talked about oppression, I just, I heard from some residents outside of my ward that live by the area, they're homes, and they're not cyclists, but they've talked about the speeds of traffic, and I think it's, we can forget how this affects even people that aren't mobile, how it can change your quality of life, how fast traffic moves by your room and by your home. Also, just to remind you that enforcement, as Counselor Hoy talked about, quite often we think about officers and our law enforcement for enforcement, a speed bump is not a replacement in any way for enforcement, but can be a very useful tool when we want to remind people of the speed limit, so I'm pretty excited about the belt and suspenders approach.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I want to echo what both the speakers, the public is testifying with the counselors, said, councils, counselors have said, the staff has done an excellent job on this. I will tell you that, and I gave this to Anthony and his supervisor the other day, I've been talking a lot with the people of the school for the blind, school for the deaf, I'm sorry, school for the deaf, and without, without fail, they have been extremely complimentary of the staff and the job they've done, and this is a really thorough, really excellent And this is a really thorough, really excellent report, and we're really moving in a new, exciting way here, which to me goes to why we should make these changes here, because I think it was Mr. Courtwright said, this is something new, we're doing a new plan, and we ought to look at it differently. And then I think the 20 mile an hour studies on the south end of that will have effect on the rest of the city, how we look at the planning there. And finally, maybe the other difference here, Anthony, is that in New Jersey, here, we don't have to worry about where we're going to put the bodies in the concrete.
Oh, my goodness. Throw in some shade, Mr. Anderson. The Garden State.
I just have to give one more comment, and kind of to Counselor Lewis's comments about the free flowing traffic. You know, there are appropriate places to have free flowing traffic, and then there are appropriate places where it's not appropriate. One of those is at Winter and D. Personally, I have pulled a young child from a car in an accident at Winter and D, because D Street goes through without stops, Winter stops, and it is a very difficult intersection to see because of how heavy it's traveled and how many cars and people live there. I pulled a toddler from the car, his mother was unconscious in the car, people started to call 911, and it was an experience I hope to never have to do again. If that intersection was a four-way stop, it won't happen again.
Thank you. I've been working on this essentially since Angela started talking to me about it, and I think this, I am so pleased to see this come this far along. There are certainly minor elements I would or wouldn't do initially, but I live at one of those Ts, just a house away from one of those Ts, not on this particular map, but the kind of intersection we're talking about. And it is every time I come down 16th Street or come in on Kansas off of 17th, it is exciting because you're watching three ways about six times to see if somebody's going to come roaring through on a bicycle, on a skateboard, in a truck, in a car. It doesn't matter, they have, there is a sense of danger in those unmarked T intersections, and hearing that those would be corrected in one part of town gives me hope. And I always like to look for a moment of hope in these discussions, so I really appreciate this coming along this far. I'm not sure about belt and suspenders, but I'd like to see if it works. I think it's a great idea to see if it does some. So, all those in favor of the motion, oops, okay, thought I'd get ahead of you there. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I want to reiterate my support of the plan, and unfortunately, I guess I won't be able to make that as a motion, to demonstrate how important this plan is to me. I can only say now that, I can?
Oh, yeah, you can do a substitute motion now.
Because we've just taken care of a couple of motions.
Oh, okay, so the light went on, okay.
I'm sorry, if that wasn't clear.
Well, then I do, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Nanki. Yes, sir.
If I might, we have had several people tell us about how important these additions are. The implication has been that it won't be safe until we do that. But yet, we had the president of the Salem Bicycle Club say nothing about that, and how excited he was that this plan could come to fruition. It is a good plan. The additions are going to be something that is going to cost extra money, and from a balance standpoint, I think that that money could be used somewhere else. In my short time here, as I mentioned, we have done the streets, I mean, the bicycle and pedestrian plan, the railroad bridge, the Minto Island Bridge, the Union Street. We have constantly been working on supporting pedestrian and bicycle transportation in Salem, and I firmly believe that this plan is an excellent way to continue that, but I just can't go as far as the additions.
Okay, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, it's definitely a good plan. Question of staff, if I may?
Yes.
Because we're looking at a plan right now, which is policy, and then there's staff functions, and there's nothing that restricts staff from putting stop signs at intersections where there is concern and neighbors reach out to them, or you just deem that it's worthy of one, and we've heard some concerns this evening regarding that. Hearing that, what would staff typically do down the road as the plan from council, as an overall plan moves through? Would you now go look at those to see if that's warranted, or what would be the normal staff process?
Well, if Counselor Lewis's substitute motion passes, that's what we would do. Assuming Counselor Lewis's motion fails, what I've heard council adopt is that we're going to install those stop signs. Now, the concern that I have is the way we operate our system, stop signs need to be warranted. When we install any traffic control device that is, doesn't meet a warrant, we run a risk that if there is an accident and there, you know, we create some level of liability. I'm going to want to ask, not tonight, but I'm going to want to ask our legal staff, I'm not going to put Dan on the spot, but, you know, we're going to have to think about that, whether we should do a study anyway and see if they do meet, so that we have that paperwork on file. So that's what's running through my mind, but what I understand from what council has adopted, or will soon adopt, is that we're going to install the signs, but I'm concerned that some of them may or may not meet warrants, and then what does that mean? And so that's, you know, that's what we'll look at. So our plan is to study the warrants on a lot of these locations anyway, because they're in the plan. But if the motion, and I've lost track, if the motion that's on the floor...
This is the staff recommendation on the floor.
Right, so, right, so if Counselor Lewis's motion passes, we will study the locations. If Counselor Lewis's motion does not pass, we'll install the stop signs.
City manager, like, if you don't mind, just second.
I just want to make sure we're responsive to Counselor Nanki's question. Were we?
Yes, very much so, and actually, with an addition as well, in regards to some potential liabilities for signing intersections that may not warrant said signing, which also raises another concern.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, Mr. Fernandez, I can't quite see you, but, thank you, thank you, Counselor. So, in my way of looking at this, this is the first time we've done a plan like this. And so we have, we sort of have our old system of warrant, warranted intersections, and we're, but we have a new paradigm here with this new bikeway. So essentially, we're shifting council policy, if this vote were to pass, to say, anytime we're making a bikeway and we have uncontrolled intersections like this, the idea is that we will control them from here forward. I mean, isn't that another way to look at this?
Yeah, as I said, we'll install them. I mean, if the council adopts this, there's no question we'll install them. What, all I'm saying is, I'm not sure if these locations do not meet the, you know, the professional standards that we have, what issues does that create for us? And that's a question that, you know, as I'm thinking about this, that's a question that we'll ask our lawyers, and it's really about whether we actually go out and do any studying at all, or just install them based on the policy body having adopted this. Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
It sounds like people are wanting a work session possibly on...
No.
No. That couldn't have been more clear.
Would you like one?
After we're, we'll talk offline.
Okay, okay. Counselor Anderson.
Well, I just want to expand on Counselor Hoy's comments. It seems to me that what we would be doing if Counselor Lewis's motion fails and the amended motion fails is we are saying, as a matter of city policy, when we have adopted bicycle pathways, we are going to want to put in stop signs at the crossing streets. Yeah, and I do not think that that is then, I don't know that there are any professional standards as to what you do on designated bikeways, so, you know, I mean, I'm a lawyer and I've done liability work, and I don't know if I would be so concerned if someplace on the other side of town, there's a cross street that we didn't have a stop sign in, because we're saying here, we are only doing this because it is in the Winter Maple Greenway, or whatever we want to call it. We're going to call it.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to call about a five-minute recess right now and give anyone who wants to have a chance to talk to the lawyer, a chance to talk to the lawyer offline, okay? We'll just recess. Taking a look at Counselor Lewis's motion, which is the staff recommendation, and we're going to get some clarification on the liability associated with placing stop signs.
So, Rand, or, excuse me, I want to use the Randall word, but Peter had mentioned that the little concern about installing stop signs where there wouldn't otherwise be warrants for it, and if that raises a potential liability issue. In my mind, the idea that we're putting more stop signs in more likely makes the intersection safer, not less safe, so I think the chances of having an accident may decrease. I think the potential claim of someone saying, oh, I didn't know there was a stop sign there and then caused an accident, and because it wasn't warranted, somehow the city's liable for that, I think is very attenuated, and therefore probably not a large liability concern on my part, so I don't really have any concerns of us as a policy matter for this plan, installing stop signs where they might not otherwise be warranted.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is everyone ready to vote? Counselor Nanki.
Question on a T intersection. Through Street has right-of-way? Or is it the same as a standard intersection where it would be the vehicle to the right as you approach and you see another vehicle?
Does he lose his license?
Yeah, please, let's make sure.
For a T intersection, the top of the T has the right-of-way versus yielding to your right at a four-way.
Okay.
Top of the T.
Meaning the Through Street.
This one.
The top part.
If it's a lowercase t? That's a four-way, right?
Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. So to comment on this, the motion that's on the table, I would say that one of the things I think is very important is taking into consideration public comment on this plan, and we've largely heard from people who live in the neighborhood and they bike this neighborhood, and to look at examples of these types of facilities that have been constructed in other cities. And I think the addition of these controls at the intersection are going to make it safer and accessible for more people. And really, when we're talking about transportation projects, this is a relatively minimal cost thing. We're not paving more roads and that sort of thing, this is installing stop signs and some speed bumps.
Okay, all those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, got that? Okay. All right, motion fails. Now, we are back to the amended main motion. Counselor, do you have anything further to say?
Well, I guess I just wanted to ask one more question of staff, because I thought maybe, maybe I'm a little confused, and that is, Anthony and you had said before, with the speed bumps that are identified in the plan right now, and I'm looking specifically at, there is no page number, but segment 2C, I guess, which is showing some speed bumps. Are those speed bumps that will happen in the plan, or are those proposed but need further study before we actually put them in? And sorry, there's no page number.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Now, these are proposed.
They are proposed, so they are going to happen. They will be installed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody ready? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay, Lewis and Nanki. Okay, motion passes. Very good. All right, Counselor Anderson, 3.3E.
I move the staff recommendation. This is on the purchase and sale agreement for the Dogwood Heights, and I just want to point out that this is a good example of the system working. We had a lot of testimony and a lot of discussion, and the, when we passed this, and there was, the concern that was expressed was about the particular piece of property that we are now purchasing, and that was known as parcel four, phase four of the development, and I think it's more appropriately suited for the purpose that we are buying it for, for open space, and I think this is a way that satisfies both the interests of the developer here, and also the interest of the neighborhood in general, and the interest of the city as a whole. So I think this is a terrific situation, and I'm glad we're doing it.
I am too. I want to personally thank Mr. Fernandez and Clint Demmerin for the work that they did immediately to go to work on putting this project together, putting this land together. I'm just really pleased, I really appreciate the work you've done, so, thank you. And adding it to the Kreuzentra, I think the whole package is working out really to the benefit of that neighborhood, and I'm really pleased with the way this went. Counselor McCoy.
As I read this, I thought it was curious. What is the rationale used for using public work stormwater fees to purchase the property?
Yeah, this is a, it's a steep hillside that is very wooded, so it will assist in controlling stormwater. So it's a, you know, maintaining, in fact, we have tree planting in our stormwater budget, so these are already planted, and it limits more stormwater runoff. It's a natural basin, so that's...
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and I wouldn't be surprised that we see more potential opportunities as we get into more challenging development lands in the hills as well. So, yeah, and it was wonderful how staff took after that. And I know the developer was stressed on how to fit that in, and we had issues with fire response, and so best option.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff and you, Mr. Mayor, for your support on this project. It's been really important to my neighborhood and the people in Ward 7. This is a really great example of, as Counselor Anderson said, the system working well. So thank you.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't often go against the grain, but I am on this one, I'm going to be a no on this. Maybe it's because I wasn't at the meeting, and maybe it's because I watched online from Washington DC. So I was in a sour disposition when I watched it. So I just, this one, something doesn't sit well with me with it, I just, I just don't think it's the right way to go, so I'm going to be a no.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Hoy and McCoy, no. Motion passes. Okay, Counselor McCoy, 3.3G.
Move staff recommendation. Okay, to the motion, probably just a question really for the city manager. This has to do with our good old Lone Oak reimbursement district, and where the city manager wants to move this from hearing, reopening the hearing on April 23rd to June 11th. My question is, why so late? And I'm getting questions, both in my ward and from other councilors, on why a six-week extension there for something that we debated for hours and hours and hours, yeah.
Well, certainly, and I don't, I believe the public hearing was closed.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed now.
The additional time, first of all, I gave you bad information that night. I thought the Union Gospel Mission Appeal Public Hearing was on, was tonight, and it's actually on April 23rd. You also have the West Salem Code cleanup, and tonight you've added greenhouse gas emission discussion. That seems like an awfully lot for a lot of material to cover in one meeting. If you believe you have the stamina to cover all of those topics, certainly we could be ready on April 23rd. Also, the additional time was recommended to provide sufficient public notice, as was requested by... sufficient public notice, as was requested by council. And I think as we've all learned, sufficient can, sufficient is a, is a definition that can vary among, among the public, and we wanted to, I wanted to err on the side of plenty of time for, for the public. Third was an opportunity to brief, brief councilors. It was clear that night that there was still a lack of understanding, in my opinion, on how reimbursement district works, the methodology, and I wanted to offer that opportunity to you all one more time before a more public discussion. And then last, and specifically for the June date, was mayor and council attendance. All of those clearly are within your purview to change, and staff can be ready if you did want to move that deliberation up into, up to one of the May meetings.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you.
I think you just-
Generally, I like to make decisions as quickly as possible, but I think with a decision of this magnitude, in terms of everything that we've had to discuss here, it would be best to have everybody, every counselor be able to be here to make this decision. And that, as I understand, it cannot happen until June 11th. So I, that in and of itself is enough to me to say, let's, let the whole council be here to hear this, because, you know, this is an issue that-
You'll be one short. I won't be here on June 11th.
I thought you would be here.
No, I won't be here.
Oh, well, we'll be one short then.
There you go.
But we could be shorter otherwise.
At that point, when will we be back?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Kizer.
Will we have a full council in May, at any of our May meetings? I mean, I'm planning to be here in May for both council meetings.
The first meeting in May?
The first meeting in May. I mean, I would, I kinda would like to just to get this resolved. I mean, for a lot of people, I think they just want it to get one way or the other, get it resolved. So, I mean, our May 14th meeting, that's the first meeting in May, it's, it's a month away, more than a month away from today. Personally, I think that's way more time than what I need to talk with people and all that.
Counselor McCoy?
I would move to amend this to May 14th.
Second?
Second by Anderson. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just the applicant, have we spoken with them? I mean, you add another month in, are they trying to do anything with their property? Have we, did we broach the dates on, on those with them as well?
Their, their, Lenya's application's been approved. The district is in place, so I'm not sure that they're waiting on anything from us.
Okay.
Counselor Hoy?
Would May 14th give us sufficient time to give notice to the neighbors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I would.
Counselor Lewis?
Real quick, I want to count, thank Counselor Kizer for making our motion. That keeps me from having to make a substitute motion. I appreciate it.
Okay, the, yeah, the amendment is to, is to move it to May 14th. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is then to have our action evening on the reimbursement district on May 14th. All those in favor say aye.
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 No, we amended it.
We just amended it. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Anyone opposed? Sorry, okay. Okay, information reports. Counselor McCoy?
On item 6A, and I've had conversations with Mr. Fernandez about this, and just, you know, we, and I'm one of the outer wards, and we look at this, and well, we're gonna start the, you know, on the inner wards and circle your way out, which, as a representative of an outer ward, gives me pause, and I've been out walking and knocking on doors, and I can tell you, there are miles of sidewalks in my ward that need attention. Well, you've got streets that literally somebody with a stroller couldn't walk their baby down the street with the ups and downs and cliffs and all that stuff, and there's other ones that are so, what is it called, spalling, or they're just basically gone back to gravel in areas of my, in my ward. We're getting no attention. But this, again, we, you know, refers to the hundred percent, or the ADA work, and I guess my question is, when we made the agreement on this, was it a hundred percent of everything we spent had to be ADA-related? Wouldn't it be, could we make it 75 or 80 and have 15 or 20 percent that get used outside of the central area to, to deal with stuff in five, six, seven, and four? Instead of we're just waiting for our turn, well, our turn's years away, reading this report.
Mr. Fernandez, you want to speak to that ADA factor? Oh, Bruce is here. Bruce! Mr. Helen Brantwell here. What do we do here?
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and City Councilors. I'm Bruce Silverbrant, Streets Maintenance Supervisor and in charge of our sidewalk rehabilitation program. And I do have some good news for our outer wards. We are indeed paying attention to them. We have a new team in place. We call it our Sidewalk Response Team. They started up finally after eight failed recruitments over the last year and a half. That's how tight our labor market is, by the way, for skilled people in construction and maintenance trades. We finally have that team in place, and they are doing wonderful work. And they are right now focusing neighborhood association by neighborhood association on tackling some of the worst problems, worst barriers to mobility in each of those neighborhoods. We can't fix 100% of every neighborhood right now.
I can't, I just fix something.
We are fixing things, and we are also, as a, as a side note here, been working for the last two years to bring our overlay program into ADA compliance. What that has already benefited the neighborhoods that are gonna see overlays this summer is 70 new updated curb ramps scattered throughout the entire city, where we're gonna be performing overlays. We want to get these curb ramps up to compliance with modern rules with the ADA, before we do our overlays, we can match up to them. And that's what we've been doing, utilizing mostly our contractor of record. Costs us a tremendous amount of money. What we're also doing is looking at and surveying those sidewalks between those curb ramps adjacent to those streets for overlaying, and taking out the worst barriers to mobility at the same time. Just because a sidewalk looks bad doesn't mean it's not passable. We're trying to make sure we eliminate those actual barriers that would prevent people from getting from those new ramps to the next one on the next corner. This is a result of making our overlay program totally compliant. That's another side piece, that's adding a lot more improvement to our neighborhoods, that really wasn't even counted in the sidewalk program originally. Now, if council remembers back in 2012, we went and brought before council a staff report with a policy attached, that we agreed after negotiations with Disabled Rights Oregon, that we would spend 70% of our sidewalk program money on ADA preference routes. Thirty percent we are allowed to spend in neighborhoods. Now, this is a culmination of not only with the work we're doing through our overlay program, but also with this new sidewalk response team, whose main focus is our neighborhoods. We've already conducted a number of repairs. In fact, I've got a list here of how many repairs we've already conducted just since October. What's fun about these is, is these are all by square feet, so it's kinda hard to tell exactly how many locations, but Neighborhood Association One, we've already done, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 locations in Neighborhood One, which is South Gateway.
Which neighborhood is what?
South Gateway.
Okay. Oh, you're number one!
So, that was just the beginning. And right now, we're currently wrapping up the Grant Neighborhood, moving into Nenn, so we're moving through the community. And we, in fact, just over spring break tackled a very pressing issue right there at Capitol and D Street, right across from Parish Middle School. The entire corner, both sides of that house on the corner there, were virtually impassable. We took the opportunity and got, thankfully, a break, enough of a break in the weather, to address that and got that accomplished while the kids were out of school. So, believe me, we have lots of things going on here, and one of the things that is occurring, and you're probably gonna get phone calls because of this, could we do? Well, they fixed the guy right across the street, why didn't they fix mine? My problem's been older than that guy. We use a lot of factors that we try to use to justify, where are we doing these repairs? Is it a very old one, been there 20, 30 years, some of these repair requests? Is it a school route? Is it close to an ADA or a public facility that ADA, and non-ADA people access for, for public accommodation? There are a lot of factors involved here. We don't just pick these just out of a hat. So, believe me, we understand that every neighborhood has thousands of locations. We have 20,000 properties that need help, still within our system. We have to be compliant with the federal ADA. Right now, because we've been doing such a good job, Disabled Rights Oregon and subsequently the Department of Justice are leaving us alone on our plan, and we're doing it. So I'm very proud of where we're making the progress. It took us a long time to get started on this last element, simply because there were not enough skilled bodies to go around in this entire valley. I can tell you that we have had eight failed recruitments the last year and a half for even entry-level positions with basic skills. That's how tight our labor market is. So it's not by, because we're not trying. And we are finally starting to get some resources, and I think what's finally happening is what normally happens when we get good skill into our fold here, they get tired of all the travel time between jobs, and they want to be, spend more time with their families, they come to the city for a more stable job, for more stable hours. And that's what attracts a lot of skilled labor to our community, to our work here in public work.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Counselor McCoy?
Just follow up, so Bruce, you said you're working with the neighborhood associations? I mean, is there some process the neighborhood associations, whether it's a form or request or something like that?
No, sir. We're doing this entirely from our own database and our own-
Okay, you're doing it on your own, it's your own database. So, by neighborhood, by neighborhood. So then, is there, if, two things. As a counselor who gets calls all the time, it'd be nice if, when you do come into that, whatever the ward is, and you have the eight or 10, you know, let me have them. Because it's nicer to go to the neighborhood association and say, "Yeah, well, here we go. Here's 10 projects that got done in our ward," rather than, you know, not know that and just be taking shots at it.
Certainly, certainly, Counselor. This is brand-new for us. In fact, my new supervisor in over concrete maintenance built me a wonderful table here, so I could have this information at my fingertips. So this is something we'll certainly share.
Good. And so, yeah, it's understood, this will be shared out with councilors now that the opportunity affords itself. Okay, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, and I would like to underscore the, the request for that report. I think that would be excellent information. The other thing that I think would be really helpful is, you mentioned the criteria in the, you know, just picking these projects, projects randomly. It would be really helpful if we could articulate that to, at neighborhood associations, what that criteria is, so they have an understanding that there is a methodology, and it's not random, and we're not singling, you know, we're not singling them out to not be repaired at their, in their area. It would be really helpful for us to, to understand that methodology, so we can help explain it to the neighborhood associations.
We could provide that, Counselor.
Thank you.
And certainly, that's actually in your criteria for sidewalk repair attachment, which has been updated for this staff report. Pretty much spells out exactly how we use this criteria to select these locations. It's a little more vague, because again, we also have a lot of other pressures that we get. You gotta remember, we get two calls a day. Every workday, we get two service requests for sidewalk repair. Every single workday throughout the year. It never slows down. So that's a lot of information, a lot of customers to deal with, a lot of sidewalks to inspect, a lot of decisions have to be made, and we are constantly prioritizing by new information we receive. That also goes along with the criteria we're using to make these decisions ahead of time.
Counselor Cook, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm just really grateful for the report, Bruce, and really excited about the work you're doing.
Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions, Bruce, and thank you for sharing your report. I'm looking at your criteria for identifying priority sidewalk repair locations. The first one, it says, priority number one, a complaint from a person with disabilities. So I know actually somebody specifically who's paraplegic, whose sidewalk is literally gravel out in front. So you're saying that they could call Public Works, send an email, or how, who do they contact in the city to get their sidewalk repaired?
All calls for sidewalk repairs should go to our Public Works Dispatch Center.
Public Works Dispatch.
Because then it's logged in our service request system, and that gives us the documentation of the request and our response to it.
Okay. And then, do they have to provide something, saying that they are disabled, what their disability is, or do you just, do we just take their word, or is there confirmation? Is, or is it just?
We expect most people are not gonna lie about being disabled.
To be honest, okay. All right, good. And then, I just had a question on, on your second priority. Is any facilities altered since 1992, which tells me these are newer sidewalks are second priority? Why, why is that?
Okay.
Instead of an older sidewalk getting priority over a new sidewalk?
This is actually Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This is a federal requirement. It says, "Any street facility that has been altered as of 1992 must also include access to the street level service or the installation of curb ramps." That was the original intent of that, of that law for Title II. It's been, since been massaged in courts and so forth. Anytime we do an overlay on a street, curb to curbs, from one intersection to another, we must inspect and bring into compliance all ADA facilities at the corners. That's what that means.
All right, so we're assuming that those are ADA already, and that we're gonna repair those, because they are meeting ADA. Okay. And then, I've got two quick ones. The sidewalk response team, your strike force, or whatever you want to call it, they're in place now. I believe last year, the council or budget committee allocated $1 million for sidewalks in general, and have we, how much have we used of that? Have we used, where are we at? More than half, less than half?
We are going to meet very closely that $1 million goal. We, even with the weather slowing us down a bit, there's still lots that we can accomplish.
Okay. And then, my third question, in July of 2016, you sent me an email, and I had asked, "How much would it cost just to do all the sidewalks all at one time, replace all of the existing sidewalks that needed repair?" And at that time, you said the projected cost was $50 to $60 million. Do you feel that that is still reasonable? Is it, is it more than that now? What's kind of your, and I know this is totally impromptu, but just to get an idea of how much the total cost to just fix it all?
Actually, I wouldn't doubt that's gone up 20%. And the reason I would say that is because of market pressure, because our economy is booming so well. Good luck finding a concrete contractor that has any room for you. Even our own contractor of record, our prices have gone up because of demand is so high. He can ask for it. So, that's one of the downfall of having a booming economy. Good luck finding somebody to do the work for you, and it's gonna cost you more because their demand for their, for their scale is already so high. That's just a market effect on, on that overall price.
Great, well, thank you very much. You're all, great, that was really good report, Bruce. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on any of the other? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. This is directed to Mr. Wright, which is-
Can't hear you.
This is directed to Mr. Wright, who hasn't had a chance to speak tonight, so, I know you've been regretting that, so here we go, Norm. This is on 6H, the, the sidewalks around at the north end of the Winter Maple, neighborhood, Greenway, whatever, our new name for it. And my question is, I'm, I'm interested in the situation at the corner of Auto Group Avenue and Cherry Road. And what I see happening there, that's, and I go, I ride my bike to the Crock Center all the time, and I go right by that road and take a right there. So I know it's a very, it's already kind of problematic, because you've got, oh, bark boys there, big trucks, and you've got people coming in and out of the car dealership, and there's car dealerships on the other side, and there's the bus barn apart, there's buses on the other side that are coming back and forth. So it's, it's already kind of a problematic intersection, and what I see that is happening now is, on Auto Group Avenue, there's going to be put in a drive-through coffee kiosk, whatever you want to call it, and I see that clearly, it's, the entrance and the exit is on Auto Group Avenue, so there's nothing that's right at that intersection. But still, then you're gonna have a lot of people who are desperate for caffeine coming in and caffeinated coming out, and the, the, you know, the way the intersection, the bicycle path is going is all the way diagonally across the street. So, having said all that, is that the actual plan, or is that a schematic drawing, and it may be something else? Because I look at that and see, maybe, rather than the hypotenuse of the right-angle triangle, you might want to go on the two other sides.
Yeah, so, so just to paraphrase, if I'm understanding this right, Counselor Anderson, the question is whether or not the diagonal crossing for the bike path at this intersection is accurate with the plan? Is that correct?
Well, sometimes you just kind of get schematic drawings, that this is the way it could be, and other times, you know- other times, uh, you know, and then when you get on the site, you say, "Oh, uh, you know, my concern is, um, it's almost kinda like a scramble."
Yeah.
You know, intersection at, at big cities where you can walk any direction you want. And I, just with the addition of the, um, the, the drive-through coffee kiosk, it's, you know, we're starting to create, already problematic intersection is getting more problematic. And so, I'm wondering if the diagonal is the right way to go. And it says, it says signal phase, and I can see Director Hernandez is, is talking to Mr. Hoffman, so maybe, maybe you could give us some input on that.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate your willingness to give me an opportunity to speak tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
But really, truly.
And you can defer to the Public Works Director, that's fine.
I'll defer it to Peter, yeah.
Still wanna hear you talk about that hypotenuse.
Yes, the hypotenuse.
Yes, yes.
Peruse the hypotenuse, don't scan it.
I'll apply the Pythagorean theorem and find.
Yes, please.
I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Hoffman respond to the question, but first, I wanna take Counselor Anderson E.N. to task for calling me Director Hernandez.
A thousand apologies.
I am very sensitive to that, I'm sorry, Peter. Right for you to call me.
Yeah, the ultimate plan for the intersection is a diagonal crossing like, and a bike signal like we have at 25th and Madrona. So, it's just shown here as a conceptual, but it, it, it will probably be tied to a different phase in the very first, but it, but at, at a future point, we will have a, a bike crossing there and a bike signal.
Okay, so, when it's finally developed, uh, fully developed, there will be a signal that will only be for bikes to cross, and it'll be red light at all other.
Correct.
Of the four intersection points.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do we know how the, how it's working, that same plan is, have we had that down to 25th and Madrona enough to figure out whether that's working or not, or is that still, uh, kinda in the infancy stages?
It's, it's working.
Okay.
So, it's in operation. I have not heard anything for or against it, and no news is usually good news.
Mm-hmm.
But that would be the same concept here, and we did, uh, uh, I believe we did a traffic study there already to make sure that it would not, it, it could function within all the other things that are going.
And that traffic study included the anticipated additional cars from the, from the drive-through?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm just kinda flagging this, and I know you'll be looking at it as we actually get to the development phase of that, and especially in light of the 1%, 60% comments we had on Winter Maple, uh, you know, about that's, to me, is, that's gonna be, uh, an iffy situation for families, and if we really got it covered by, by lights on all directions when bikes are going and there's a long enough time.
Yeah, they would have their own phase to go, so it'd be, they would be just for them to move, and, and it's to connect to the plan, the paths that we have, the multi-use paths.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Hoy?
I have a comment on a different item.
Oh, okay, well, just a sec, I would make sure everybody's done with this one. Okay, go ahead then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on 6E. That's the hearings officer decision on the sign variance at Willamette Town, Willamette Town Center, AKA Lancaster Mall. I, I very much support the upgrades to the signs, they're really attractive. My only concern about this one is I can't see where the Public Works staff ever had the opportunity to weigh in on this, and I, in talking with staff, they don't recall weighing in on it, and I'm concerned about making the intersection at D and Lancaster a, a little bit more obfuscated with this solid sign there. So, I just wanna make sure that staff has the opportunity to weigh in on it, and that it's placed appropriately according to the Public Works staff.
So, do you wanna comment on this, Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you. Typically, we do not comment on the sign content or height or anything of the sort. Uh, we are always careful, and I believe, uh, community development staff is careful, to make sure that it's outside of the vision clearance triangle. This is a signalized intersection, so the triangle is narrower. Uh, so, I, not having read this, I presume that it meets those standards if it went through hearings officer.
Just to further add to that as well, criteria number three within the analysis of assigned permit approval does specify that a sign must not interfere with any use of public right-of-way, and also that it must not interfere naturally with the, the side triangles that, that Mr. Fernandez is referring to. So, it is a criteria that the hearings officer, as well as our staff review, but if there is a procedural way in which we can improve things, for example, with public hearing, public, with Public Works involvement, it'll always be welcome.
Hi, Lisa Anderson will be planning administrator. Yes, Public Works staff reviewed it, and yes, they confirmed it's not in the vision clearance. I can confirm that, because they originally had it in the right-of-way. So, we had to work with Public Works staff to make sure that they put it in the right place.
I appreciate that. How would I know that in reading the council packet? Is there, is that noted anywhere?
Well, I believe it's in the staff report. The hearings officer issues his own decision, so he picks and choose what he, chooses what he puts in his decision. He doesn't necessarily copy everything from the staff report, um, but yes, Public Works reviews it, and all the city staff weigh in on all of our land use actions, so.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. I, I had one question on the, um, CIP. We get a look at it? Is that what we're getting today, is just to look at the capital improvement plan? We're not doing anything tonight with it, right? Except taking a look at it to see what's there and not there? And I'll tell ya, I'm concerned, uh, due to the comments from Ms. O'Bree, that this, the bikeway we spent so much time on this evening, we spent so much time on over the years, is not in here, and I wanna make sure I understand what's going on here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think, uh, I think, yes, this is just the initial look. I think there'll be a public hearing as part of the budget.
When is that?
Review process.
Do you remember?
Yeah, April 25th.
Okay, April 25th.
But there is money in the CIP for.
There is?
Right. It's not called out as the bikeway, but there is money associated with some of the improvements that are in the plan.
I, I would ask you, as you bring that forward, 'cause I assume you or, or Casey will be testifying on it or presenting it, not testifying, but presenting it, that that get called out. I think since it's been, uh, it's been called out by a member of the public, an interested member of the public, I'd like to see it.
Certainly.
In aggregate.
And that's for the construction part, the, the operational components of the plan, so installation of signs.
Whatever you got.
Uh, that's not, that's not gonna make the CIP. That's just, we're just gonna fund that through operations and get those installed as quickly as possible.
That might be good, too, if you cadastrians that at the bottom.
Yeah.
Or we can provide a progress report, uh, separate from the capital improvement process.
Well, I just don't wanna miss this in the capital improvement project, 'cause if it were me, and I were Ms. O'Bree, I'd be here asking, "Where is it in this thing?" I think we might as well just beat her to the punch.
We will let the O'Breys know what page it is so they can come and testify.
Excellent, that's what I wanna.
And thank us for the, for the money that's in there.
And very good, thank you. Counselor Kaser?
Thanks. Uh, I had a question on 6point D, which is the public review of the draft update to the floodplain management plan. I just wanted to clarify that this is coming out of the Floodplain Management Plan Committee as opposed to the Managing Flood Risks Committee, which I was on the subcommittee of, and, uh, I guess what I wanted to know was, when is the recommendation from the Managing Flood Risks Committee coming? 'Cause I missed the last meeting, but I feel like there's some intersection here of things. But, yeah, was curious to know.
Hi, I'm Robert Chandler, Assistant Director of Public Works. They are two different committees, two different products. What you have now on the Floodplain Management Plan is a periodic review of that plan that was adopted by council 2013, I'm not sure. Um, and that's a requirement for our community rating system when we are reviewed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, um, to make sure we're still meeting the two different criteria, and that's one of the things that allows us, uh, through the FEMA and the community rating system, to apply, uh, discount, that the, our residents get a discount on the floodplain on their flood insurance premiums. The Managing Flood Risks Committee, uh, was looking at, uh, how do we approach, um, the opportunity to, uh, conduct modeling to evaluate floodplain, as you know. Uh, where we are now with that is, uh, I and my staff are gonna go to various community, uh, neighborhood associations, and we'll brief them and talk with them about it, and then come back to council with our recommendation as part of the Stormwater Master Plan, 'cause that's gonna wrap into a policy, probably a month or more away before we come back here. Probably closer to two with that outreach.
All right, thank you.
Good question, yeah.
Okay, great. Why don't we go to first reading of ordinances? Yeah, what's Kenny been doing?
All right. Ordinance, Kenny.
Oh, Kenny.
This better be good, Kenny.
Summarizing a tweet.
Ordinance Bill Number 318 and ordinance changing the Salem area comprehensive plan map designation, neighborhood plan map designation, and zoning map designation of certain properties in West Salem, amending Salem revised code chapters 110, 111, 111, 553, 606, 608, 609, 703, 806, and 900, repealing chapter 607, 610, and 611, and creating chapters 525, 535, and 556.
Counselor McCoy, do you wanna make the motion?
Yeah, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Cook. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Was there anyone from the public who wanted to speak? Do you wanna speak?
No.
No, you're, it, anything you want. It's the open moment.
Boy, how often do you get that?
We have, uh, you have three minutes. At two minutes, the, uh, yellow light comes on to let you know you have one minute left.
Okay.
Okay? Give your name and address.
Can I give the ward instead?
You can do the ward instead, yes, you can.
I'm Maggie Tarsia, Ward 1, and I'd just like to make it known to people who are making decisions what it's like living on this bike path. Uh, Academy and Maple is the intersection that's closest to my home, and, um, within the last three, three weeks, I'd say there's been three dead squirrels hit by cars. There's been, um, a, my neighbor got into an automobile accident on her way to work at that intersection, and, um, there was another person that was parked late at night along Academy, and then he just sat there for a while, and then he floored it and did a, spun a cookie one up the curb and left tire tracks in the grass. Um, there's, um, people walking by that, well, and, and bicycles, when they're going by, there's, they're making a lot of racket, but the, um, the one that really bothers me the most is the one that, uh, rides while he's reading and he's holding a book, and so he's got no hands on the steering wheel, and he's not watching anything that he's doing. Um, people are crisscrossing everywhere, nobody's going to the end of the, you know, at the intersection to make their crosses, and there are people everywhere, just walking down them, and, and our sidewalks are really, really, really bad, so everybody thinks that that's the reason why nobody's using the sidewalks, and all the pedestrians are walking down the middle of the street. My insurance rates, I take my car out of my garage about, well, I, to be honest, probably about 10 times a year. It seems like three times, but, um, it's probably about 10. Um, my insurance has skyrocketed last year and the year before, and that's right about when this bike thing started. I know it's gonna skyrocket again because of that accident on the corner, and, um, anyway, there's all kinds of issues that are really.
Yeah.
Making me nuts, and the neighbors, too. So, I got my, something stolen off of my porch, and my neighbors, we haven't had anything stolen forever, and we haven't had any animals hit by cars. There's screeching tires and everything.
So, Megan, which street are you on?
I'm on Maple.
You're on Maple.
At Academy. And another thing about Academy is that Academy wasn't done in the study, even though, um, I made it known to everybody all over the place that that's a really dangerous intersection, and it has been for a long time.
So, what, do you, your understanding is, are we signing Academy and Maple? Is it getting any kind of special treatment? It is. Did you wanna explain to what?
Hi again, Maggie. We talked earlier today about several of these issues, so that intersection is gonna get stop signs, like we had talked about, so that, that won't be one of those uncontrolled intersections anymore. Um, and then we had talked about, you know, going to Highland Neighborhood to talk about the increase in crime you've been noticing, and your neighbors have been noticing, too, so that you can talk with the officer there, and they can start to look at maybe having some targeted patrols.
Right. I was listening to that about putting the stop signs, um, perpendicular to the, um, bike path, and to me, I'm picturing that, and what that's doing is creating basically a drag strip.
On, on Maple, you mean it's gonna be, so, isn't it so that it's perpendicular, really, to?
Not parallel, but perpendicular. So, if you, so the bike path is like this, and the stop signs are like this, that just makes this a clean thoroughfare for everybody, and that's where everybody's flooring it.
And that's why there's the speed humps there.
Yeah, that'll be, that will be good if that happens.
And the posted speed limits and things like that, yeah.
That'll be good if that happens, but would, what would really help a lot, which I mentioned to Anthony, was that, um, uh, if they could block off, um, Academy right past, uh, Eminence Sales, that, that would keep people from Sunny View, which is a busy street, from dumping into our neighborhood and cutting through there, and then they get to the end of the intersection, they don't even know where they're going. It's like, "Oh, where am I now?"
Yeah.